Okay, folks have them two getting logged in. Go ahead and mark on this here, so the voting will start in a minute and a half.
Who they, did she sign in on Zoom?
No, she didn't, but we have no indication that she's not gonna be there. It's like Frances said, unless you know they're not gonna be there, do count them as in. So we'll just have to let her vote as asked and say if the rest doesn't get logged in.
Okay, so Susan Randall is wanting me to send her the link.
Get me doing it.
Cindy, last call, are we still missing Commissioner Powers and Commissioner La Forge?
I'm here, I'm working on my Prime Gov, but I'm here.
Okay, I can have your voice vote, Janice, until we get that going, if necessary.
So, it's gonna, this is Alan in IT. It's gonna be hard to work with her and get her logged in and her pay attention to the meeting also. So at this point, I would suggest she just voice vote.
I agree, I think that's fine, we've got another commissioner who's doing that today anyway. There's no problem with that in terms of the process, so that's perfectly fine. So that leaves us Commissioner La Forge, he was in today's pre-meeting, I do wanna get started, cuz it is 1:30.
He's logging in right now. I heard that discussion, I'm not giving up however, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay. Okay, well, it's 1:30, so let's get started. Good afternoon, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Oklahoma City Planning Commission for Thursday, September 24th of 2020. And this is a video conference planning commission meeting, and as relates to that, I have a few announcements to make just as we get started. If the video conference is disconnected at any time during the meeting, the meeting shall be stopped and reconvened once the audio connection is restored. If communications are unable to be restored within 30 minutes, items remaining for consideration will be continued until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting, which is scheduled for October 8th, 2020, at 1:00 PM. That meeting will also be held by video conference. The agenda and supporting documents for today's meeting can be found at OKC.gov. And if you have any trouble locating those documents, or if you have any trouble in terms of needing technical assistance, or to get a notice to the commission that you're having difficulty communicating, the number you will use for today's meeting is 405-297-2289. Again, 297-2289. For anyone wishing to speak about an agenda item or to speak under Citizens to be Heard, hopefully you have previously notified staff by email or phone, or by signing up online. If you have not done so, you can call the same number I just provided, which again, 297-2289, and let staff know that you would like to be heard, and they'll get a message to us accordingly. I'll also allow briefly for public comment on each item, you'll notice that I'll pause and provide some technical instructions to each, to each person, in terms of how they can participate in the meeting. Speakers will be allowed five minutes to comment in accordance with our bylaws. I will reserve the right to hold comments shorter if a point's already been made, or it's been just simply repeated. And a couple of technical points. If you are joining us by phone today, and you would like to be heard, you can raise your hand by pushing *9 on your phone. That will alert staff that you'd like to be heard, and they'll engage to unmute your line to make that possible. On your phone to unmute, you will use *6. And *6 will allow you to unmute your phone, you'll still have to be recognized by staff, but that will unmute on your side. If you on your computer, you can use your spacebar to unmute yourself, or to mute yourself, and you can use Alt-Y, the letter Y, to raise or lower your hand to be seen and recognized by staff. Please remember, only one person can be heard at a time. If more than one person speaks, we really won't hear anybody. And so, if any, for anyone speaking today, including commission members, please identify yourself when you begin to speak. As a reminder for commission members too, if you agreed to be available by video, which everybody has, I believe, you need to make sure your camera stays on at all times. If you're gonna step away from the meeting for a moment, just alert us, interrupt the meeting that you're gonna be doing that, just so everyone that's paying attention is aware that you stepped away, and then alert us when you return. With that, we'll get started, I thank everyone for being here, appreciate it. And our first order of business is to receive the minutes from the September 10th, 2020 meeting. Unless there's a discussion on that, I will take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Pennington, I move that we receive the minutes of the previous meeting.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
I have a motion and a second to receive the minutes from the September 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Hinkle, how will you vote?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Powers, how will you vote?
Yes.
We're pausing just a moment to allow Prime Gov to give us the opportunity to vote electronically. Commissioner Hinkle and Commissioners Powers' votes will be recorded as provided. And again, that motion was made by Commissioner Pennington, and it was seconded by Commissioner Coffee.
Chairman Cravens, I'm gonna go ahead and do that after we can move on to the, to the next item, if you wanna go ahead and do a roll call for the rest.
Well, then that's exactly what I'll do, I'll just roll call this. Commissioner Claire, how do you vote on the receipt of the minutes?
Aye.
Commissioner Powers voted aye. Would be Commissioner Privet?
Aye.
Commissioner Coffee? Commissioner Coffee, how do you vote on the minutes?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle? You voted aye, I believe, yep. Commissioner Highsmith?
Aye.
Commissioner Pennington?
Aye.
I will vote aye, Commissioner La Forge?
Aye.
Minutes are received. Next order of business is continuance requests. We have some uncontested requests previously submitted, I believe there are three of those, Mr. Butler?
Item 20, SPUD 1252, deferred to October 8th. Item 21, CE 1031, deferred to October 8th also. And item 22, case number PC 10681, deferred to October 22nd.
Okay, those are three items that are proposed for continuance requests today. Again, for your convenience, if you're joining us in the public, SPUD 1252, CE 1031, and PC 10681, if you wish to be heard on any of those items today, this is your chance. I'll pause just a moment to see if that's true. Remember, *9 raises your hand, Alt-Y on your computer raises.
I do not even know what's going on.
Hearing no comments from staff that we have anybody who wish to engage, I'll take a motion on those continuances as read.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the uncontested, excuse me. I move that we continue the items as read.
I have a motion of a second?
I'll second.
Second from Commissioner Privet, so I have a motion and a second to continue the items as read. Looks like it's recording it, wait for the opportunity to vote, and then I'll take Commissioner Powers and Commissioner Hinkle's vote. Okay, please cast your votes, Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And those items are continued. I believe we have some new requests for continuance, and there's a number of those, Mr. Butler?
Do, item 14, SPUD 1244, has been withdrawn. Item 15, PC 10687, has been continued, or requested continued to October 22nd. Item 16, case number PUD 1776, request to be continued to October 8th. Item 17, KC 7199, request to be continued to October 8th as well. Item 18, CPA 2020, number 6, also requested for October 8th. And finally, item 19, PUD 1778, request to continue to October 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Butler, as read, and for those of you that are joining us online or by phone, if you have today's agenda in front of you, just for confirmation, that is item 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 on today's agenda. If you wish to be heard on any of those items, this is your opportunity. I'll pause just a moment and remind you that *9 on your phone, raise your hand to alert staff you'd like to be heard, or Alt-Y on your computer will accomplish the same thing, I'll pause just a moment.
Mr. Chairman, David Box, on items 16 and 17, we actually need to continue those to the October 22nd date, rather than the October 8th. The Conference Plan Amendment Request did not get published in time. Therefore, in order for those two items to accompany the Comp Plan Change Request, we need to move those two to October 22nd rather than the 8th.
Understood, so we'll, we'll amend those continuances. Again, that's item 16 and item 17, from the October 8th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting to the October 22nd Planning Commission meeting. Hearing that there's no members of the public that wish to be heard on these, I will take a motion on those continuances as read and amended.
Mr. Chairman, I move to continue the items as read.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Coffee, I second the motion.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Coffee, I have a motion and a second to continue the items as read. Please cast your votes when available. Here we go, Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the items have been continued unanimously. Next item on today's agenda is the consent items, we do have five items on today's consent agenda. Mr. Butler, you wanna read those, force?
Yes, the first item is PC 10686, application to rezone 300 Northwest, 111th Street, from R1 to I2. The second item is CE 7201, final plat of Ironstone Commercial, and that is located east of North Portland Avenue and south of Northwest 164th Street. Item 3 is case number CE 7208, final plat of Park Place Heights, Phase 3, and that's located east of Morgan Road and north of Southwest 44th Street. Item 4, case number CE 7211, final plat of Mustang Ridge, Phase 5, located south of Southwest, Southwest 44th Street and east of Check Hall Road. And item 5 is case number CE 7212, final plat of Council Ridge North, located south of Northwest 164th Street and west of North Council Road.
Thank you very much. Folks from the public, if you're joining us today, you'll notice four of those items are final plats. The other is a rezoning application, these are all items that staff deem essentially administrative in nature, which is why we consider them as a group. And with that, I will pause just a moment to see, those are items 1 through 5 on today's agenda. If you did want to be heard on one of those items, this is your opportunity. So I'll pause just a moment, reminding you that *9 on your phone will alert staff you'd like to be heard, or Alt-Y on your computer, and I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody wants to be heard on these items today. Hearing nothing there, I will take a motion on the consent docket as read.
This is Commissioner Coffee, I move approval of items 1 through 5 on the consent docket.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Pennington, second that motion, staff, I have a motion as second to approve items 1 through 5. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the consent items have been approved unanimously. Next thing on today's agenda begins with items requiring separate vote. As we move into these items, I'll remind everyone, just quickly, if you are having any problem reaching us, I cannot stress to you how important it is to each of the members of the commission that we hear from folks in the public. If you're having trouble, 405-297-2289, again, 297-2289, and they will alert us to any challenges that anyone's having, communicating with the commission effectively at today's meeting. With that, go ahead, item number 6 is our first item for separate consideration. Mr. Butler, you wanna read that for us?
Yes, case number CE 7209, it's a final plat of Council Business Park, and that's located west of North Council Road and north of Northwest Expressway, with a variance to Section 5.4.2.8.1 of the subdivision regulations.
The developer is proposing nine office commercial lots on this 2.23 acre site. Private access drives, public water and public sewer improvements are proposed. Development will be in accordance with proposed SPUD 1249, which basically falls under the I-1 district regulations. Only one of the lots will have direct access onto North Council Road. The rest of the lots will be taking access off of private shared parking and access easements. There are three TEs, the applicant is in agreement with TEs 1 and 3. Their staff believes they need a variance to TE number 2, because they are showing their private access drives as private shared parking and access easements, rather than common area private access drives, as the subdivision regulations indicate. Therefore, a variance is required. Mark Grubbs and David Box are on the line to represent the case.
Mr. Box, Mr. Grubbs, either of you have anything to add to staff's introduction?
Yeah, I'll just, David Box, 5.2 Clockboard Drive. So on the variance, you know, when you have a industrial park slash office park like this, requiring that common area to be treated as common area in a separate parcel becomes problematic moving forward, it becomes burdensome to the developer, and moving forward becomes a separate parcel, separate tax ID, and imposes burdens that are unique when it comes to a commercial slash industrial park. If we think about common area and why it should be labeled separately, you know, oftentimes we think of it in terms of a residential subdivision. Well, there, you've got an HOA, you've got it set up differently to where it's easier to track here. What we intend to do, which is fairly common in office and industrial parks, is to take those property lines to the center, and then it'll all be, you know, encumbered with access easements and drives, so the same result happens. It just allows for, in this type of development, a much cleaner way for the owners of the property and the developer to be able to move forward. It's my understanding that this is really a new interpretation of the subreg, and that for years and years, most of the developments have handled it in the manner in which we seek to handle it. So we would ask for your consideration in the variance on TE number 2.
So, Mr. Box, just to be clear for the commission, the granting of the variance satisfies your concern here today?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, Commissioner Claire, this is your ward, so if you have comments or questions of the applicant or staff, I would just note, of course, we do have the variance to consider when we get to the point where we wanna make motions on these.
No, I had spoken to Mr. Box previously this week, so I did not have any further questions or comments, and so I'm prepared to make a motion on the variance, if there's no further discussion.
Okay, other commissioners have comments or questions on this one? Hearing none, I'll ask if there are members of the public that wish to be heard. Now, if you wanna raise your hand and speak on this item, *9 on your phone, Alt-Y on your computer, we'll raise your hand and alert staff. I'll pause just a moment. Hearing no comments from staff that we have a taker, Mr. Claire, I will take your motion.
Okay, so make a motion to approve variance to Section 5.4.2.1 of the subdivision regulations.
I have a motion to approve the variance, do I have a second?
Hinkle, second.
Commissioner Hinkle is second in the motion, I have a motion and a second, please cast your votes when available. And Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the variance is approved unanimously, Commissioner, or Commissioner Claire, we need a motion on the item itself.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve item CE 7209.
Need a second?
Hinkle, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the final plat for CE 7209, please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that application is approved unanimously. Item number 7.
Case number CE 7210 is a preliminary plat of Greenbrier at Surrey Hills, located north of West Hefner Road and east of Piedmont Road, along with a variance to Section 5.3.1. D. 5 of the subdivision regulations.
The developer is proposing 105 single-family residential lots, five common areas and one commercial lot on this 75.74 acre site. Residential portion of the site has a gross residential density of 1.44 dwelling units per acre. Public streets, water and sewer improvements are proposed. The subdivision is broken into two sections. The first section having 24 lots is in the southwest portion of the site. Will have access taken from West Hefner Road through one entrance. Second section contains 81 lots, access to this section will also have access to Hefner Road through one median divided entrance. No, no street steps are planned to the north, due to the location of a creek, which we'll talk a little bit more about in a second. They also are not able to connect to the east. The previous subdivision to the east did not allow for that connection possibility. Are nine TEs for this one. The applicant is in agreement with TEs 1, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9. They would like to discuss TE 2 and 5 in greater detail, and they are seeking a variance on TE 3, related to the connection requirement to adjacent parcels specifically to the north. Again, there is a substantial creek in that location, the subdivision regulations do allow the committee to consider that physical feature when considering the variance. Brad Reed with Crafton Toll is on the line, in case there are any questions.
Mr. Reed, are you with us today?
Yes, sir.
Do you have anything you wanna add to staff's introduction of the item, or talk about the TE's at issue?
Yes, Brad Reed of Crafton Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard. So, item number 2, we think we do actually meet item number 2. It says, "Plat should be redesigned to provide continuous system of open space along streams and corridors, which separate lots from floodplains or parren areas and mature trees." You look at the preliminary plat, we've done this, and this is actually why we need to request the variance on number 3, is the floodplain to the north makes it where it's not really possible for us to cross, to get to the other side on that. So, why we need to request number 3. There was an issue with number 5, traffic went out and looked at our, our locations. One was mismarked by about 20 feet, we went and re-certified it, it will work. The other one is a little bit of a weird situation, it's the west one. It technically, it's a 45, which gives us almost 700 feet of site distance that we need, but there's a stop sign there at Piedmont and Hefner, and so we need to move that slightly over like 100 feet, and then you can see all of that intersection, we've talked to traffic, I think they're fine with that, but we'll make sure that we get this on the final plats before these go in, that traffic is good with our locations on the sites.
Mr. Reed, if you're, if you believe that item number, the TE 2 is met, then you've essentially agreed to it, so.
We have, and I'm not sure why it's even in there, I guess my confusion.
Okay, on, on TE 5, staff brought to my attention about the site distance issue. What I would just say for the record is, you are aware of the requirements for the site distance, yes?
Yes.
And so, you know that if it comes back at a final plat and that hasn't been addressed, that will be a problem, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, I'll note that, that's duly noted in the record, if you will. I would also, Commissioner Claire, just let you know that staff did indicate in our discussion before the meeting that there is, that they do believe that the creek channel that cuts this portion of the development off from future development in the north would create an obstruction that would be reasonable not to provide connectivity to, because of the challenges associated with that, Jared Martin, is that fair?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Claire, this is your ward, I don't know if you have other questions or issues on this one, but I'll turn it over to you.
I do, so I understand the vehicular connectivity issue, and am okay with that, but I wanted to ask the applicant if there's any plans for pedestrian connectivity via trails to allow basically, you know, residents from that west neighborhood to have pedestrian circulation access to any amenities in the eastern half.
I believe so, to the north, you know, is, it's a large floodplain, it's a lot of water that goes through that. Over there to the, the east is Surrey Hills Golf Course. And so, this developer is actually the owner of Surrey Hills Golf Course, and so, you know, we have some common areas in there to allow for that. I don't know if he has a plan on a trail or any of that, but there's the ability for us to have some connectivity and get people over to Surrey Hills, and they'll be, you know, right next to that, so I think they'd wanna take part in some of that, those amenities that are there.
Mr. Reed, would you be willing to commit to pedestrian connectivity?
I think we do run into a few issues still, because we do have a large creek on that side as well. So I, I don't wanna say yes, cuz I'm not sure exactly how it's gonna work, that's my concern. There's a large drainage that basically surrounds all of this site, which is kinda why it's laid out the way it is.
Commissioner Claire, I don't know how you, about that, or how you wanna address it.
Well, I wanna, so, for the, for the common areas that you have labeled, do you have any amenities planned for that? Playgrounds, amenity centers, anything of that nature?
Nothing at this time.
So there's just gonna be open space?
Well, I'm sure they'll have something, and I don't know what it is at now, when, you know, in here it says that final plats will have the type amenities, and they'll figure that out at that time. Like I said, the golf course, if you look at this, there's a, the golf course actually is what's separating us from Surrey Hills Boulevard. There's a hole there, but it has, you know, the cart path and things like that, so, you know. It gets a little weird, because that is a private business that, you know, I can provide access over there, but it is technically a private business, like I said, it's the same developer, so I don't know that he would have an issue with it, but.
No, I mean, I understand the, you know, providing access, God, I'm not so much concerned about that, but the, the common areas that you have labeled, if there's gonna be either a pool complex or a playground complex or anything of that, there ought to be pedestrian accessibility within the neighborhood without sending them out onto the arterial road.
Yeah, I'm not sure this is part of the Surrey Hills, you know, Neighborhood Association, this is, these are large lots, it's gonna be really a pretty nice development. At this time, I don't know the exact amenities that he is planning on, so I don't wanna promise anything, but these are gonna be, you know, these lots are 80 by 140, which, you know, dictates that it's gonna be a nicer development, as I said, I don't know, I won't promise anything, cuz I'm not sure what he, what he's planning on at this time.
Commissioner Claire, you know, I think one of the things you could do here, if you want to, which I think would be perfectly appropriate, we've had discussions in the past about, well, you know, what can we even do at the final plat stage? We already approved the preliminary plat, well, I, I think we should commit to getting a response from the developer and their representatives at that time on pedestrian connectivity and certainty to those common elements. And I think, given that you're being sort of forced to make an advisory decision or recommendation to the rest of the commission on this item, it would be fair for you to revisit those items at that time, and if you're not satisfied that, that, you know, that the items they provided are inadequate, or that connectivity should be provided as a result of that, I think Mr. Reed and his, his client and applicant are subjecting themselves to potentially having a problem there. But I think, you know, holding it up, because he's saying he doesn't know, probably not a good outcome. Allowing them to get away from the pedestrian connectivity is probably not a good outcome either.
Right.
What, what are we, what's our issue with pedestrian connectivity, what's between what?
So you've got the, the small area over on the, on the, the west side, that's, you know, not connected via, via roadway because of the creek that you mentioned, to the east side, through common areas at 5, C A B, maybe C A. So, you know, if you've got amenities over on the east, east half, allowing, you know, residents and children to access those amenities without having to basically go out to the, to Hefner Road and walk down and, and gain access through that median entry.
I, I don't, I don't, again, I, so we have a preliminary plat, and I'm not sure at what level we can, you know, agree to that and be held accountable for that, is somewhat my concern as well.
Mr. Reed, you're.
I'm sorry, but I'm, this is Commissioner Powers, I'm finding this a little bit either puzzling or laughable, I'm not quite sure which. This is a preliminary plat, they don't know whether they've got even just, you know, basic common pedestrian accessibility to their common areas and so forth, let's continue it, let them figure it out.
We do have access, we've left two open spaces that allow for a common area access for both of those sections, you can see.
Mr. Reed, what he's, what, I think where the confusion is, and, and let me just see if I can remedy this quick. Mr. Reed, what he's, what I think where the confusion is, and, and let me just see if I can remedy this quickly. The common area that's in the center that splits the neighborhood into two. What Commissioner Claire is saying is that it doesn't show that you're going to provide pedestrian access across that area. So you've got two entrances onto Hefner Road. The only way for the people in the western small little piece to access common area elements on the eastern side of your development would be to go out to Hefner Road. What we're trying to confirm is that if there are common area elements there that are shared for the development, that they would be able to traverse that common area shown on your preliminary plat to get across to them. That, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, but uh, and uh, any other preliminary plat, have we ever shown a bridge or things like that?
No, but you, but, but there's been a commitment to pedestrian connectivity. So you're committing.
Open on both of those sides to allow for people to get across there.
There's. So you are committing to pedestrian connectivity?
Well, there's open space for both of that, for the ability for them to do that.
Well, but there's the difference of just providing open space and you, you're not, you're not held accountable to go back and construct the paths or the, the pedestrian bridge crossings to, to traverse the creek. Um, so there's one, I mean, it's, it's almost a false promise to, to allow the area. Um, and then there's nothing to hold, hold, you know, commit you to building those paths and that, and that access in the future.
If I might, this is Jeff. I mean, this, this also goes back to TV two, which is asking for that continuous system of open space. You know, there, there's no, there's no real plan of circulation here for people to be able to utilize that open space. And I keep, I think that goes along with the, the commissioner's comments so far. I mean, if you're trying to get from uh, the small uh, little pod here on the west, those, I don't know, twenty lots or so. Uh, how are you going to get over? There, there's really, it, it's going to be really difficult for you to visit a friend over on the other side or visit the common space if there is any, um, that's not uh completely. And there's some pinch points, for example, where it's really steep or it's really impossible to get through. Um, so like, uh, the commissioner is saying, really, your only option is going head for the road. There's no way for you to get via the open space unless you're walking through the creek uh, and up some really steep embankments to get around through that development.
I, I, I agree with you, Mr. Reed, that you don't necessarily have to commit to how you're going to do it. But it is absolutely commonplace for us to require an agreement to pedestrian connectivity on issues like this. That's how you solve it is entirely up to you. We're asking that you commit to that before the final plat, which I think is a reasonable request. And I think just to, you know, sort of move this conversation along, if you'd like to take, you know, a continuance to sort of sort that out, that's fine. Otherwise, I think I'm certainly in supportive of Mr. Claire's position that we would include a TE that would require pedestrian connectivity between the two sides.
We can agree to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, Ms. Reed, we, going through that exercise, are there other TE's you want to comment on there?
Uh, no, just the request on, on item three.
So the variance request to item three. But TE's two and five, we're now in agreement with, and then we're going to add TE ten potentially, Commissioner Claire, that would require pedestrian connectivity. Other commissioners have comments or thoughts on this one? Hearing none, I'll ask, um, if there are members of the public here that want to be heard today on, on item C seventy-two-ten, this is your opportunity. I'll pause just a moment and remind you that star nine on your phone will raise your hand for staff and alt Y on your computer will do the exact same thing. And I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody wants to share some thoughts with us. Hearing none, Commissioner Claire, um, so up to you to make a motion if you'd like.
Um, yeah, happy to make a motion. I'll start with the variance, uh, motion to approve variance, uh, section five point three point one, point D, point five of the subdivision regulations relating to connections to adjacent parcels.
I have a motion to approve the variance for C seventy-two-ten. Do I have a second on the variance?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Pennington to approve the variance. So a motion and a second. Please cast your votes when available. Here we go, Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? Commissioner Claire, actually, we're still waiting on you, is that? All right, there we go. No problem. And that variance is approved unanimously. Commissioner Claire, we need a motion on the item with the TE's amended.
So I will make a motion to approve item C seventy-two-ten um, with the associated TE's and adding TE ten requiring pedestrian connectivity via hard surface or soft surface uh trails through comm spaces A through D.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Pennington, so I have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat subject to the technical evaluations as read for C seventy-two-ten. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that item is approved unanimously. Item number eight?
SPD twelve forty-six is an application but to rezone twelve twenty-eight, nine, Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street from R one to SPD twelve forty-six.
This, uh, this application is an eight thousand square foot, single-family lot occupied with a single-family home on the south side of Thirty-Sixth Street, just east of Classen Boulevard. Uh, we're going from R one to a SPUD with an R four base. Uh, it's a little unique in that it encompasses two different development scenarios. One, uh, keeping the existing home, allowing for two units in the existing home and two buildings in back with three units total. The second scenario would be should something happen to that, the, the existing home and it has to be removed. Uh, we, they would allow two units in front with the two units in back, but no more than, excuse me, two buildings in front, two buildings in back, maximum of six units. Staff found it to be in conformance with urban medium land designation and recommend approval with two TE's and Ken Fitzsimmons is the applicant.
Mr. Fitzsimmons, are you with us today?
Yes.
Do you have anything to add to staff's introduction of your item?
Uh, no, I think he explained it well. The, the whole, and it was a little confusing in the beginning is why we had to continue it. And hopefully the, the spud through uh, uh, Commissioner Powers' help is, makes more sense now. The goal is to try to retain the house, uh, whether we're here or we sell it, you know, in the future. It's a house built in nineteen sixteen and we'd like to, it's not an HP area and we're not trying to do an HP protection on this, but we would like to save, you know, the old building if, if at all possible. And uh, so we have the scenario there that we would be allowed to develop behind the house. Uh, you know, to, to add some dwelling units behind the house. And then also the scenario is, uh, uh, Mr. Chambliss pointed out that um, if for some reason a tornado or fire wiped out everything, you know, what would it look like then? And so that was the intent is to try to create uh the spud so it allows for primarily for the old house to stay. But if it doesn't, then what would it be?
Understood, thank you very much. And Mr. Fitzsimmons, I don't know if I missed it, but what, did you give your address for the record? I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry, yeah, twelve twenty-eight Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Commissioner Powers, this is your word, so I'll let you lead us off for discussions with the uh, with staff or the applicant.
Well, a, as was stated, this is really a very simple, kind of straightforward, and we were trying to keep it that way. Um, you know, application, there's an existing house. There are these additional buildings out back. They would like to be able to add a second story to their two-car garage if that's possible. Uh, if, if the house stays, everything stays the way it is now, parking and so on. The, the only thing that, that made it a little more complicated was just trying to anticipate what would happen. I mean, we wanted to make it clear in the SPD that, you know, the goal here is to keep the existing house um, while allowing some additional um, uh, density. But in the event something happened to the house, and unfortunately that does happen to hundred-year-old homes, uh, since we had an architect who was willing and able, we thought we would just go ahead and, and provide for what would happen. Not an uncommon thing to do where you're talking about uh, redeveloping an existing building. So we wanted to provide an alternative, what would happen if the house had to be scraped for some reason. So we did do that. It, it ended up looking more complicated than it is. Um, I'm all in favor of this. I don't think I, I, I certainly have not heard from anybody, uh, haven't had any protests that I'm aware of. Um, I mean, if there, if there are bits and pieces of it that people want to talk about, the other thing was the driveway, I guess. Uh, initially, there was a, a, a plan that provided for two driveways off of Thirty-Sixth, but we, we got past that. We're just going to do one if it's relocated in the future because of the redevelopment of property. There still will just be one, so. Um, if anybody has any questions, I'm sure Mr. Fitzsimmons will be happy to answer them or I'll be happy to answer what I can, but this is really pretty straightforward and I'm very supportive of it.
Understood, thank you very much. Just for the point of clarification in the record, the staff report that was included in our packet, there have been modifications made uh, to the master design statement that was presented through discussions with the applicant. But you are confident that staff has the most recent version of the master design statement that we're voting on today?
They, you know, we, when I chose to make the, the changes that I did to the staff report, that just seemed like an easier way to present those. I don't know whether those documents have been changed. You know, we kind of went with this initially, it's like scenario one, scenario two, that seemed way too complicated. Between now and city council, we, meaning Mr. Fitzsimmons, myself and staff, will make absolutely sure that what is presented to council, both in terms of the master design statement and the staff report is, is very, very clear with respect to what we're voting on today.
Got it. Uh, commissioners, any questions for the applicant or for staff on this item? Hearing none, I just have one. I, I don't know, um, Commissioner Powers, you or Mr. Fitzsimmons, in terms of who, given just how it's transpired, you mentioned the driveways. The only concern I had about it was that you've got, coming off of Classen onto Thirty-Sixth, you've got a dual left turn lane for eastbound traffic. And this property is basically two off the hard corner. So with traffic, is it the lesser of two evils to have traffic backing out onto Thirty-Sixth Street? Especially given that we're increasing the density at the location? Or is it the lesser of the two evils to have a circle drive or some other means of getting the vehicles to be able to turn around so they can have egress going out frontward in their vehicles? Does that make sense?
Um, I, I'm happy to hear whatever discussion there might be, knowing, uh, particularly Mr. Highsmith's um, views about driveways. I figured, you, it, the lesser of two evils, I think that's really it. You know, whether it's better to have, to try to be backing out onto Thirty-Sixth, I wouldn't want to have to do it. There is a, there is enough maneuvering room at the moment, I think, that not all the cars have to, to back out. And certainly if the property were redeveloped, that would be provided. But um, whether two, two driveways uh is better than one is something that I was just anticipating staff would have strong feelings about. So that's why we went with one, based on the TE.
Sure, the staff or our resident traffic expert, Commissioner Claire, does anybody have thoughts or comments on that? I just want to make sure we're being thoughtful about that. We're allowing all this density right near a major, I mean, I say all this density, just an increase in density right near a major intersection. So you're going to have traffic trying to back up and there's six parking places there, people coming and going, visitors, whatever. Um, thoughts on that, staff or Commissioner Claire?
Um, I'll just add mine, um, well, I'm looking at a street view right now and there's two, provided that they're in healthy condition. There's two really nice canopy trees that would have to be removed, um, I think in order to get the circle drive in. At least one of them would be, um, I, I would hate to see that. Uh, because given the nature of the, you know, they share a driveway with the property to the west. Um, I, I do think that it looks like there's a fence, um, kind of toward the back half of the property that would kind of help, it, it would hinder maneuvering a little bit. But I do think that there is probably enough room for them to um, basically maneuver and be able to exit um, uh, you know, in a forward fashion on the Thirty-Sixth uh, without backing on the Thirty-Sixth.
Okay. Staff, and you guys agree that the lesser of two evils is the single drive with people potentially backing up as opposed to the circle drive?
I believe the revised site plans provide for some maneuvering area behind the existing house where traffic can flow out onto Thirty-Sixth without backing. If you, Cindy, do you want to cycle through those two site plans real quick?
Mr. Fitzsimmons, this may be your, um, speak now or forever hold your peace moment. If you have strong feelings about this one way or the other.
Yeah, I actually think one drive is fine. Uh, I've lived here eleven years and uh, I, you know, I, I'm not afraid to back out in Thirty-Sixth Street, but, but I do understand the uh concern, but the, the drive situation, even with the existing house remaining, will get better in the sense that currently, uh, the way we park now, uh, I've recently had my oldest son move out and his girlfriend. So now we're, we've, we're down a few cars, but we've had up to seven cars parking in here. And it's one family, if you can believe it, my sons and their friends. And uh, it, it, this will be a lot better than what we have now. What we're proposing is we're going to create some parking in the, what has been the backyard. And uh, so the intent is that people can do, uh, you know, turn around or pull in and park behind the house and then do a turnaround and drive out forward to Thirty-Sixth Street. The only, the only car that might back out might be, uh, we do have uh, one existing parking space. We'd like to have remain at the front. Um, you know, folks wanted to use that, but that's actually a very wide driveway in the front. Uh, we share it with our neighbor, uh, Fourplex next door. And it's not uncommon for the neighbors and us sometimes to use that as a maneuvering space to uh, getting straightened out to go forward.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we had the discussion, so we were thoughtful about it.
No, no, I appreciate it.
Any other comments from commissioners on, on the issue? So I'll ask, uh, before I allow, uh, Commissioner Powers to craft a motion on it, just want to make sure that we give uh, for training is a chance to be heard. If you're listening to public, this is your chance. Star nine will raise your hand on your phone and alt Y will raise your hand on your computer. And I'll pause just a moment to see if there's anybody who would like to comment on this one. Hearing nothing from staff, Commissioner Powers, if you want to make a motion, let's, let's go.
I move approval of item number, is it eight?
It is.
Uh, SPD twelve forty-six.
Yep, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Claire, second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval for item number eight, which is SPD twelve forty-six. Seconded by Commissioner Claire, please cast your votes. And Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the item is approved unanimously. Good luck, Mr. Fitzsimmons.
Thank you.
Item number nine?
SPD twelve fifty-one is an application to rezone thirty-three oh one Southeastern Avenue from SPD seven sixty to SPD twelve fifty-one.
This is a four point four acre site. It's on the west side of Eastern, south of Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street. It's going from an existing spud to a spud, new spud with an I two base. The site's developed with an existing business park. And the proposed spud simply adds uses that will allow the owner to lease to the medical marijuana industries, uh, dispensaries, processors, transporters, that sort of thing. Staff found it to be in conformance with the plan, recommends approval with no TE's. Terry or Jerry Church represent the applicant.
Is the applicant with us today?
Yes.
Uh, good afternoon, Mr. Church. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Jerry Church, um, um, are you looking for our, our business address?
Just an address, we could locate you to verify you are who you say you are.
Oh, okay, twenty-eight twelve Southwest, a hundred and twelfth street.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much for being with us today. Do you have anything you wish to add to staff's introduction of your item, sir?
Do you have anything you want to add? I've been trying to rent it for the last two years and we've had very little luck. I need to be a bit rented before the bank takes hits.
Understood. Um, I would just note, Commissioner Pennington, this is your word. I'm going to turn it over to you. My understanding from staff, just so the commission is clear, there is no change to the previous PUD except for the addition of the four use units that were outlined in the staff report. Other than that, it's identical to the used that pre-existed. So with that, Commissioner Pennington, this is your word. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, my primary concern was about the outside storage and the screening as far as the outdoor uses. As long as I'm assured of those um, outdoor uses are going to be screened from you, it's fine. I think we found one of the rare places that, uh, we won't run into too much trouble with, uh, increasing the marijuana. we won't run into too much trouble with increasing the marijuana processing that's going on.
I agree. And I would note in item six of our staff report, in terms of the MDS statement, site group screening, it says in underlined, "All outside storage will be screened from view." So I think your concern there has been assuaged. Is there anyone else commissioner-wise that wants to be heard on this item?
Seems like the development was named, right?
Yeah.
Mopey notes.
This is, this is Commissioner Powers. Can I ask a question? And this is something that somebody was just talking to me about fairly recently. I don't know enough about the medical marijuana industry or business, and you know, here we're talking about not just a dispensary, but possible what processing or, or maybe even a grow facility, I don't know. So someone, I don't even remember now who it was, was talking about that these facilities, maybe the growing, maybe the processing, can generate quite a significant and sometimes, I guess, unpleasant odor. And I wonder, is that something maybe staff can tell me that we are relying on the state medical marijuana system to regulate, I mean, to put requirements on growers or developers, processors to control that? Or is it something that we need to account for in terms of location or by, you know, making a a condition in S P U D that there be controls in place? Does anybody know?
Currently, yes, it's, it's up to the state and the city county health. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself here, but we are preparing and going to propose an ordinance for all these medical marijuana uses that creates a use unit for each one, and they will all be conditional uses. And some of those conditions include what you just mentioned. It would be ventilation systems, it would be security cameras and lighting and those kind of things. But currently, we do not, we do not have anything like that.
Do we have any knowledge or feedback from, or do we know whether, whatever it is that the state is requiring does in fact include things that, that cover like that noxious odor or not? And if so, whether it's adequate or not?
I'm not aware. Jeff, are you?
I'm not. I, I just know that we, we looked at our complaints, and we have received, I think it was two complaints about odors and marijuana, related to marijuana. So it doesn't seem to be a huge issue. But then again, you know, it's hard to say, you know, how many people it bothers versus complain.
You know, I'll take that on myself. I'll see if I can do a little bit of investigation and find out whether that's something that the current state regulations encompass, and see if I can find out. Because I, in terms of location, you know, I think that might be significant, something for us to be concerned about, not necessarily in this particular area where we're talking about something next door and auto salvage, but, you know, where where we've looked at these primarily as either agricultural or industrial or commercial based on whether they are dispensaries or processors or growers. If it, if it's, if it's going to be something that does emit like a noxious odor, we may need to give a little bit more thought to placement. So I'll, I'll do a little looking about that and see if I can answer that question.
I think that's great. Thank you, Commissioner Powers.
Can I just express this, Mr. Chairman, too, while we're talking about this potential ordinance? I think it's really important for, if we're going to, if we're going to create a new use unit, and it's going to state marijuana, and it's going to use those word, that word, and then people are going to get public notices set talking about marijuana, you know, that that sounds alarms. And so if there's some way for us to be clear about our, the, the limits that we have in terms of discriminating against that industry as far as the way that we approve of that use unit, I think we need to be very, very clear from legal about our ability to steer around that. Because I fear, depending on the way that that use unit is named, we're going to, we're going to run into trouble with neighbors every single time we have this discussion.
I agree. I agree. And, and it's my understanding that there was a great deal of consideration given and, and thought put into the, the state laws to prevent that from happening. So I think we are going to need to be very careful, but that's a topic for another day.
Fair enough. Other commissioners have comments on this item before I ask the public? Okay. Well, in that case, members of the public, this is your opportunity to be heard. Again, this is item nine, S P U D twelve fifty-one on today's agenda. It is star nine on your phone to raise your hand to be recognized by staff or alt Y on your computer. We'll do the same thing, and I'll pause just a moment.
Did you want to say anything else?
Commissioner Pennington, this is your word. I'll, I'll leave it up to you to make a motion on it.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of item nine.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Hinkle, so I have a motion, a second to recommend approval to city council on S P U D twelve fifty-one. Please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that item is approved unanimously. Mr. Church, we do wish you well with this project, sir.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Item number ten?
PUD seventeen seventy-seven, application to rezone nine, nine five zero zero Piedmont Road from R-one to PUD seventeen seventy-seven.
This application is a seven-point-seven acre site. It's located at the northeast corner of Britton and Piedmont Road. It's going from the current zoning of R-one to a new PUD with a C-three base to permit commercial development. Staff found it to be conformance with the urban load plan designation, and we recommend approval with six technical evaluations. Brad Reed with Crafton Toll represents the applicant.
Mr. Reed, do you want to give us some comments or add to staff's introduction of your item today?
Yeah, so we're just looking to get this rezoned with Piedmont Road. You know, they're widening it out currently, so I think that it's appropriate use for that corner for the C-three. There's six technical evaluations. We're fine with all of them except for item four. It says, "Provided an intersecting street that coincides with Redstone Ranch, preliminary plat, provide pedestrian access for adjacent residences." And we can agree to the pedestrian access. I think we have a problem with providing a street stub. It allows for a cut-through for the neighborhood, and then, you know, causes maybe some traffic issues that, that we don't really want. But we're fine with pedestrian access that we can agree to, but I don't want the actual street.
Understood. Commissioner Claire, this is your word. You're a busy guy today. You want to lead us off on discussion here. Questions for staff or the applicant?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to discuss. I'm, I'm in support of the application. I didn't really have, I'm, I'm happy to hear regarding TE four that they're, they're open to the pedestrian access. I just want to make sure that we're also providing adequate pedestrian access from the public right away as well, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I weigh in here just for a second to ask a question? You know, this is a, this issue of providing vehicular access through commercial areas and between commercial areas is something that's kind of puzzling to me. I've, I've heard both sides of that. I had been under the impression that, and it seems to me that, that TE number four would indicate, the city really favors having that vehicular access, but I've heard people who own those properties or develop those properties really adamantly argue against it. And I've even heard some adjoining residential areas discuss or complain about some of the problems with that kind of access. This is something I would like for us to have a little bit more information about, maybe from staff. I don't know whether it requires a full study session or whatever, but I, I would like to be able to talk this out a little bit more between us, not necessarily in the context of a particular application, so that we are fairly consistent and uniform in our policy thinking, at least, on these things.
Seems reasonable. Other commissioners have questions or comments?
I, I got one more. So it looks to me like between the, the corner parcel with the, the gas and the C-store, that there is no access to the other portion here, and, and so that's requiring an extra driveway. Would you be open to allowing cross-access and maybe limit in, maybe limiting one of those driveways?
Yeah, so I think, I don't know, our TE, last T on there, six, I think, says something about two driveways. So we'll do a shared drive. Again, this, that's a kind of a preliminary idea of what could be there, but we can do a shared drive if there is like a gas station or something like that. We'd agree to a shared drive for that one, and then that would allow that cross-access between the two.
And, and removal of one of the, the northern, like the center.
That's, I think it's item six, and we're fine with.
Okay.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Claire, just two, two points on the TEs, and then I have, I have one thing I'd like to add would be revising, we'd be amending TE four simply to require pedestrian access for the adjacent residents to reach the center. And then I think TE six, in order to clarify what Mr. Reed is saying and do it, you know, assuage your concern there, I think I would probably amend that to say, it, it says it'll provide two hundred feet of separation. I think you could limit it to two drives if you wanted. And one thing that I had asked the applicant, Commissioner Claire, was we have sort of made it a, you know, a policy or a way to address compatibility issues of some of the use units that were outlined. In fact, the staff report makes mention of the, the potential compatibility problems. But I asked him if he would be willing to limit a, a use units eighty-three hundred point three four, eighty-three hundred point three six, eighty-three hundred point four five, or eighty-three hundred point four six, all of those to one hundred and fifty feet from R-one, the drive-through order windows is what I'm talking about, the speakers. We, we've sort of made that a habit, and I think it's a good one, of just separating, you know, these, in areas where, especially where you don't have any existing residential or commercial, that seems like a very easy mitigation measure to, you know, address, you know, like that, the building you see on your screen, which is just a representation, it's not a commitment to build that, but, you know, where you have a drive-through window right behind that retail building that the person whose house backs up to that, they have to hear, you know, smoothies get ordered a hundred times a day. Mr. Reed had no problem with that, so unless there's some objection, I, I'd really like to see that amendment made and us continue to have that policy. So again, it would be limiting use units eighty-three hundred point three four, eighty-three hundred point three six. And the reason I included, and JJ, I may be doing this wrong, but eighty-three hundred point four five and four six is gas stations more and more increasingly including drive-through order windows in the backs of their facilities. So I think it makes sense to include those. Is there a better way to do that? Could we just, could we limit drive-through order windows to one hundred and fifty feet from residential? Could we just make that change?
Yes, it could be that simple.
Okay, let's just do that. That way we don't have to bungle the use units. We just limit drive-through order windows to be one hundred and fifty feet from R-one, or from residential uses. If you're agreeable with that, Commissioner Claire?
I am, yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have questions or concerns on this item, or I'll turn it over to the public just briefly? I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but. Hearing nothing from commissioners, I'll ask members of the public that are with us today, if they wish to be heard, star nine on your phone will raise your hand, alt Y on your computer will do the same thing. I'll pause just a moment to see if anybody wishes to speak to us. Hearing none, Commissioner Claire, if you're prepared, feel free to make your motion.
Okay. Make a motion to approve PUD one seven seven seven, given the, all the technical evaluations and amending TE number four to remove providing intersecting streets to Redstone Ranch, the preliminary plat, removing that, and only providing pedestrian access from adjacent residential uses as well as adding TE seven, limiting the drive-through order windows to one hundred and fifty feet from residential uses.
And you wanted to amend TE six to limit it to two drives, is that correct?
That, yes, thank you. Amending TE six to limiting to two drives.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to city council for PUD seventeen seventy-seven, as read and amended by Commissioner Claire. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle, how do you vote?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And the application is approved unanimously. Good luck on that one, Mr. Reed. Item number eleven?
S P, S P U D twelve forty-eight is an application to rezone fourteen twenty-five North Broadway Avenue from C-four to S P U D twelve forty-eight.
This is a one-point-seven acre site at the southwest corner of Northwest Fourteenth and Broadway. It's currently zoned C-three and C-four, and it's going to a spud with a DTD-one base. Staff found it to be in conformance and recommends approval with three TEs that the applicant agrees to. We might just want to put the applicant on notice, though, that any on-street, any new on-street parking that is proposed must be approved separately by the Traffic and Transportation Commission. David Box represents the applicant.
Mr. Box, anything you wish to add to staff's introduction?
Sure. David Box, five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. On us, on the call with us is Richard McCowen as well, who's the developer for the project. So we understand what Mr. Chandler said, that we will have to go to traffic commission, but we wanted to put it into our spud just so that it's clear what our intent is long-term. We think having, you know, the ability to have those on-street parking spaces in an urban setting like this is, is very important, and, and it's something that is positive for the development. If you look at the edge at Thirteenth and Walker, you know, they do have on-street parking, similar to what we show here along Walker as you move south past Thirteenth Street. So another big huge development, it's a bit of a, an oddity in that the south half of this block is zoned pursuant to the DTD-one already. The north half of this block is zoned C-four. And so we're, we're zoning this essentially into the DDTV-one. One of the technical evaluations in the staff report is that, you know, this piece of it would also be subject to design review. At the DDRC, we do acknowledge that, you know, it is one project. So there really be no way to, you know, tell them to close their eyes on, you know, half of the project and only consider the south half. So yes, we, we understand that this entirety will be subject to design review, and we're happy to do that. We'll be excited to share that with them once we are to that point. So exciting development on a, on a parcel that has long since, you know, been left behind and all of the excitement going on in the core, in large part thanks to some of the wonderful things that Mr. McCowen has, has brought online. I think this will just be the, the latest in the series of things he's brought to the city. So we're excited for it. There is support letters in there for some of the most, I guess, impacted neighbor, that being St. Luke's Church. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Box. Commissioner Highsmith, this is your word, my friend. Do you have anything you want to add or questions or comments?
Um, I, I'd like to probably toss it to the public. I think, I think if, you know, what, what I'm definitely interested in so far is, I mean, this, this seems to have a lot of support. And I want to know, you know, if, if we've got anybody that has any concerns, because otherwise, I mean, I think this is another easy, easy win for the city and a great project, so.
Outstanding. As Mr. Box said, we, the only letter we had in our packets was a letter of support which came from St. Luke's. That was included. It's all we had. We did not have any letters of protest that were provided. But at Commissioner Highsmith's request, I'll ask at this time, if there's anyone here joining us today, members of the public that wish to be heard on this item, star nine to raise your hand on your phone, alt Y to raise your hand on your computer, and I'll pause just a moment to see. And just a reminder, too, while we wait, two-nine-seven-two-two-eight-nine, two-nine-seven-two-two-eight-nine is the phone number you can call if you are having trouble and need assistance in getting in contact with us. Hearing no comments or anyone that's interested for the public, I'll just ask real quickly if there are any other commissioners who had questions on this one or concerns?
I didn't. I, I mean, I think, I think it looks like a really good development. The other thing I really like, and, you know, of course, JJ mentioned Traffic and Transportation Commission for the on-street parking, but it's also going to require Robinson back to, to two-way traffic, which I think is a, is a really good idea.
In fact, in, in that vein, it's worth noting that, you know, Heritage Hills years ago conducted a traffic study, or kind of traffic survey of all of their long-term plans and desires because of some of the oddities that exist within that neighborhood. The highest on the list was the addition of multiple stop signs, which was accomplished and done. Mr. Claire, you may have been on the traffic commission at the time of that. Um, the highest on the list was the addition of multiple stop signs, uh, which was accomplished and done. Commissioner Claire, you may have been on the traffic commission at the time of that. Uh, I'm going to call it a fight, I'm not sure what it was, but that, that desire. Uh, one of them is the conversion of Robinson to, to two-way. It is a, uh, a strange scenario. As you get north of, I think it's fifteenth, it's two-way, but once you get south of fifteenth. There's that median that throws it to a one-way, which frankly just doesn't make any sense anymore. I'm maybe happy to did at one point, but. Uh, we agree, and, and hopefully we can work together with the neighbor to accomplish that goal.
Okay, anybody else? Hearing nobody, Commissioner Highsmith, it's your, your show, man.
Well, I'd like to ri- real quickly note, um, you know, just how different, uh, things are today than they were. You know, just, just a few years ago, because, uh, I, I remember back to when the, the edge came through for rezoning. And, um, you know, just how tough it was to convince everybody the benefits of density like this. And so, you know. I, I really do think that this is somewhat cause for celebration to say, wow, you know, we, I think, I think we do get it now in Ward six. And, uh, I, I love seeing projects like this. I think this is good stuff, so. Um, having said that, I will, um, make a motion to recommend approval of spud twelve forty-eight to City Council.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Claire's.
I have a second from Commissioner Claire, so I have a motion and a second to recommend approval to City Council. On item number eleven in today's agenda, which is SPUD twelve forty-eight, please cast your votes when available. Commissioner Powers, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please.
All votes have been cast? And that application is approved unanimously. Uh, Mr. McCowen, good luck on this one. Item number twelve?
SPUD twelve forty-nine, application to rezone nine thousand one North Council Road from PUD one-on-one to SPUD twelve forty-nine.
This application is one-point-six acre site. It's located on, located on just west of Council. North of Northwest Expressway. It's going from an older PUD number one-on-one to a new spud with an I-one base. Uh, basically to permit an office warehouse, uh, business park development. Uh, staff found it to be in conformance with urban low luda and recommends approval with five TEs. Uh, regarding the TEs, I think staff, after meeting with the applicant, can agree to delete TE two and four. And I believe the applicant wants to discuss the other three.
Uh, Mr. Box?
Yeah, David Box five twenty-two, Call Core Drive. Um, let me, let me. Get to those TEs. So, okay, so two and four can be deleted. So if we look at TE three, I, I think we're all saying the same thing. My, my belief is that staff's. Um, position is that they want to prohibit metal panel fences. Um, that is not something we, we intend to do, and so we've provided some proposed language. Uh, to say metal panel fences shall be prohibited, however, decorative metal such as wrought iron style fencing shall be permitted in addition to wood fencing. So, we, we want it to be a nice-looking, uh, fence, and so I think, you know, decorative type wrought iron or decorative type metal fencing. Is not what staff was intending to, to seek to get rid of. Uh, metal panel fences like you might see at some sort of industrial park. Uh, certainly would not be appropriate, and we do agree, uh, to prohibit those. Uh, additionally, on the overhead doors, we certainly understand staff's position that north-facing overhead doors, if they were located on the north side of the property. Would be problematic because it would be facing those residential uses. However, uh, because we could have two rows of buildings. A, a building on the south side of the site that had a north-facing, um, door would be blocked by the other building. And so I don't think staff's intending to do that. So what we provided is this exhibit that you see on your screen. Showing the locations in which we believe overhead doors to be appropriate and consistent, I think, with what staff was intending to, uh, remove. Uh, from the, the PUD. And so we would ask that, that the language on fences be as I, as I read. And then overhead doors shall not face north or west when directly adjacent, uh, to the spud boundary. Uh, but this limitation does not, uh, prevent internal overhead doors from facing north and west consistent with the exhibit that you see on your screen. Um, five, TE five. So if, Cindy, if you could display. The, uh, pictures that I sent you. And then scroll up for me, please. So we'll stop there. Um, staff's asking that we connect to the south, uh, and to the west. And so as you look to the south, um, we're, we're at the back of house, you know. So to the south of us is the back end of a retail strip center, and so there really isn't anywhere to connect, you know, we. We don't own that property. It, it's not, it's not a place that would be desirable, um, for the developer to connect to. It is filled with dumpsters, grease traps. Um, there are a set of bollards that exist. Along the north end of that retail center, so I'm not sure that there's anywhere to connect to the south. Uh, and to the west, even though we're, we're looking southeast in this picture, if you see the area that I labeled detention area. That would be the area to the west of the subject site, and so we're, you know, I'm, we really can't connect to the west either because it's a detention area. And again, we'd be connecting to somebody else's property that is, um, already developed as a parking lot for the multifamily development that exists to the north and west. So there's nowhere to connect to the south either. Um, but if you look back to the site plan, you'll see that we do have access. I mean, we, we will access through, uh, the adjacent site to the east and, and eventually connect to, um, Council Road. So, we don't agree to TE number five. So with that, we'd ask for your approval. We'd have to answer any questions you might have.
Um, before I turn it over to Commissioner Claire, uh, Mr. Box. For our convenience, just to summarize, your amendment of TE three is that metal panel fences shall be prohibited. But ornamental iron fences or decorative, how, how do you want to phrase that for us to understand?
Yeah, I, I think you said it. I mean, it, you know, um.
We could say metal panel fences are prohibited.
Yes.
And staff, uh, JJ, is that, does that give you comfort for the basis of the requirement technical evaluation? Does that give you comfort by just that language alone, or do we need to specify what type of fencing would be permitted?
Now, if we say solid, solid metal panel fence, I think we're fine.
And that, I'm fine with that.
So solid metal panel fencing shall be prohibited. You're good with that, Mr. Box?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and then the second part of that is that you've presented an exhibit, which we can certainly incorporate into the record. And you're proposing that overhead door locations would only be permitted as marked on the exhibit that's displayed before us currently. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and just so we're all clear, that, this will be the exhibit that accompanies it to City Council based on, uh, TE three. Is that correct?
Ye- yes, sir, and I do need to know one other thing. In talking to Commissioner Claire, who did ask about, um, connectivity with the sidewalk. You'll see on the image before you, uh, in blue, four-foot sidewalk indicated from, um, kind of that, what would be that northeast building. Uh, to the property line, and so we can commit to that as well, um, through another TE or however you'd like. If that was requested, Commissioner Claire, that, that we do agree with.
Okay, Commissioner Claire, you can add that as a TE. It's also going to be memorialized in this exhibit, which the applicant has just agreed is going to accompany this item to City Council, so.
Mr. Box, this is, uh, Count, um. Commissioner Powers, I don't even know who I am today. The, are, are you assuming that there will be something between. This property and council? Is that why you're thinking that the overhead doors along the west side will be okay?
Yes, ma'am. It's zoned commercially, uh, and it's anticipated that it will be developed, and so, yes, there will be, uh, something developed there. That will block the visual, which, again.
And probably you'll be looking on the back of that from, from the west side here.
Yeah, so the overhead doors that face east on those furthest east buildings, um, would be facing directly to the back of a retail center.
Okay, okay.
Commissioner Claire, any other questions or comments or concerns that you have on this item?
Uh, well, just kind of along those lines, um, I mean, there's, we don't have a building footprint, so we don't, uh, for that east parcel. So we don't know, you know, how far north or south it extends, so that, I mean, that, there is still potential for, for a view through there. Um, so there's, I mean, I just wanted to bring that up, um, that it's still possible. And, Mr. Box, would you be, uh, agreeable to removing overhead doors from the east side of those two end buildings?
Well, let me, um. Let me text my client. I believe he's on the line.
Okay, while you do that, I'm just going to ask, so, uh, we, we, we can go ahead and do this while you work on that. Is there anyone in the public that wanted to be heard on this item today? This would be a good time to allow you to, to speak and voice any other concerns we may not have mentioned. So this is your opportunity. Star nine on your phone or alt Y on your computer will allow you to raise your hand.
Marilyn Lehmannsdorf wants to speak.
Okay.
Oh, yes, Marilyn with the planning staff. Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, ma'am, we can.
Okay, um, I just wanted to explain, uh, why we were being so specific here about the, both the overhead doors. And the, um, especially the fencing, that this is a transit-oriented luda, and I know that sounds a little crazy at this point. That there's no transit out there, but if we, you know, if you build it, they will come. So we wanted to make sure that it met the transit-oriented luda, if it was going to stay a transit-oriented luda, and so. The idea was not, uh, the wrought iron fencing sounds good. Uh, the idea is see-through fencing, so that we're not. Like a walled-off entity, where, where kind of part of the whole. Experience out there, which would be transit-oriented.
Got it. Makes perfect sense to us. I think the applicant dissuades that concern by committing not to use solid metal panel fencing.
But if they use, if they use wood, the idea is, is, uh, see-through. So wrought iron works, but a wood. Kind of clipboard fence would not meet the same.
So, yeah, we, we, we can't agree that it'll be see-through. I mean, this is a parcel that if you've driven the site. It is off-ride away. It's frankly surrounded by dumpsters. And grease traps and the back-of-house retail of that large retail center that fronts Northwest Highway. Um, and, and so I, if it's office warehouse, I think that perhaps having a solid fence, if it's wood. Is not problematic. Um.
David, do you know, do you know what's going to be to the north of there where those parking spots are?
So it's, I mean.
Yeah, it's built.
If you drove out there, you'd see that it's actually already developed. Um, it's an apartment project that's already there.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and so there's dumpsters that are kind of lining that north end or west end and that south end. Um, on the question of the east-facing overhead doors. Um, my client is agreeable to requiring, if we have overhead doors on that eastern side of those easternmost buildings. That they be required to be decorative and storefront-looking. So that if there isn't anything built or there is a sliver of it that's, that's visible along Council, uh, that it would appear to be aesthetically pleasing.
That seems like a reasonable concession. Commissioner Claire, are you clear how you can memorialize that into the record if you go to make a motion? We didn't have anybody from the public to speak, and no commissioner spoken up in opposition to this, so I want to make sure you're prepared to make your motion.
Yeah, I can, I can take a run at it.
Before, uh, this is Commissioner Powers again, and before we do that, can I ask staff if, if they're comfortable with that idea? That it's going to be aesthetically pleasing? Is there a way to state that that's going to be something enforceable at some point in the future?
Uh, you took the words out of my mouth. Um. I don't think that works at all. I mean, I don't, there's half a dozen plan reviewers down there. That are going to get these permit, and aesthetically pleasing may mean something different to each one.
Or even storefront looking. I mean, I, I, I get the idea and I'm all for it, but we're going to have to find a way to actually say that. It's some kind of translatable enforcement.
Yeah, it's, it's like having a discussion against, you know, wood, like wood fencing versus wrought iron. You're, you're being, you know, cedar fence and wrought iron fence are very specific types of fencing. Where, I agree with you that storefront looking doesn't tell us much.
So, so when I think of storefront, if I think of a, a garage door or a roll-up door that would be storefront, I would think of glass. Kind of, uh, you know, uh, a percentage of, uh, a, a certain percentage of windows or glazing, however you want to put it. Uh, and you could, you could talk about adding brick, uh, just make it all brick and window. Something to that effect.
Brick.
Well, I mean, I mean, some kind of whatever the finished material is.
I don't think it'll be brick on an overhead door.
He's, he's talking, he's talking about the veneer of the building on the east side, but I. Here, here would be my suggestion, the essence of trying to move along. I think it's going to be very difficult to specify, Mr. Box, unless you can say. We'll commit to opaque glass overhead doors on the east side of the building. I think it's going to be very hard to get there. Um.
Hold on one second.
And I also do agree with the concern that, I mean, this parcel has gone undeveloped for a very long time. I'm thrilled that it's developing at all, but I think it may be a while before there's anything on the eastern frontage there.
Yep. Yeah, well, so we can agree to the glass language on the easternmost buildings on the eastern elevation.
Opaque glass?
Yes.
Yeah, is that, uh, JJ, does that assuage your concern?
I mean, a, a portion of it, I mean, I don't, you know, I have a really cool image on my phone. If we were only in person, I could show you, but we're not. Maybe I can text it to JJ.
Metal with opaque glass. inserts. Uh, I think we can do that.
Do we need to, do we need to commit to a percentage or the entire door or?
JJ, I just sent you an image. Tell me if you agree with that, and if so, you and I can work out that language.
I can't get to it from where I am, right now.
Okay. Metal with the opaque works, my client's actually.
Okay.
Are you comfortable to make a motion, Commissioner Claire?
I do, yeah.
All right, let's, let's take a shot at it and see what we get.
Okay, um, there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to approve SPUD twelve forty-nine. Uh, with the following amendments to the technical evaluations. Um, striking technical evaluation number two. Amending technical evaluation number three to say solid metal panel fences are prohibited. And overhead doors shall not face the northeast. Sorry, north or west, um, boundaries of, of the, uh, the PU, the, the spud. And doors facing the east on the two easternmost boundaries, uh, overhead doors shall be. One-hundred percent glass, opaque glass and metal.
Real quick, if I may, um, when you say north and, and west, can we add consistent with, um, the exhibit submitted? So there's no confusion about.
Yeah, consistent with the exhibit submitted. Uh, striking TE number five and adding TE six, which is. Uh, the addition of four-foot sidewalk per the exhibit.
And staff also indicated the striking of TE four. They were satisfied with, with striking that.
Thank you, striking TE four.
Okay, I have a motion. Uh, do I have a second? And actually, before I take that second, just to be belt and suspender sure, uh, Mr. Box, you're comfortable with that motion as read?
We, we are, we delete TE two, four and five.
Correct.
Yes.
And the amendments that Commissioner Claire read into TE two?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Chambers, are you comfortable with the TEs that? The TE, yeah, my fault, TE three.
Yes, and I did get a copy of the exhibit, and we can incorporate that on the doors, and it looks fine.
Okay, understood.
Better than fine. It's fantastic.
Beautiful. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second from Commissioner Hinkle. So I have a motion, the second to recommend approval to City Council on SPUD twelve forty-nine. Striking TE's two, four and five, and amending TE three as read and agreed to by the applicant and staff. Please cast your votes. Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, please, and I'll be stepping away for a moment.
Thank you. Commissioner La Forge, Commissioner La Forge voted, and the item passes unanimously. Good luck on this one, Mr. Box.
Thank you.
Item thirteen?
SPUD twelve fifty, an application to rezone twelve-twenty-one Northwest Fiftieth Street from C four to SPUD twelve fifty.
This is a small eighteen-hundred square foot site located on the north side of Fiftieth Street, just east of Classon. It's going from C four heavy commercial to a spud with a C four base that permits, uh, only one use. And it's a outdoor, uh, covered semi-enclosed patio, uh, accessory to the, uh, high-low club. Staff found it to be in. Staff found it to be in conformance with urban medium plan designation. Recommends approval with two T Es and Adam Landman is the, represents the applicant.
Mr. Landman, are you with us today?
Yes, I am.
Do you have anything you wish to add to staff's introduction of your item, sir?
No, I think you covered it. Do you want me to talk about the T Es?
You're welcome to it this time, sure.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll wait.
Okay, fair enough. Commissioner Powers, this is your ward, I'll let you lead us on.
Okay, this is a, this is a fairly straightforward application. I, I am, have no objection whatsoever to the idea of, of outdoor music on a patio next to the High Low Club. And I, I did reach out to the Home Farm Neighborhood just to see if there was any comment or input they wanted to offer. I don't know how many, were any of you around for the great High Low wars over the Brahms?
It was my, it was my very, it was my very first planning commission meeting.
There you go, well, it was a huge, huge, huge deal. So I was surprised that I hadn't heard from anybody at all about this. And the neighbors are very supportive of keeping the High Low in business and seeing it upgraded and so on and so forth. So I think they're generally supportive too, but they, like me, had some concern about two things, noise and light. So, and I've spoken to Mr. Landman. We had discussed various options to deal with those two issues. One of them includes limiting the hours of operation to, on Tuesday nights, which is one of the nights that they had specified, not, not till midnight, but until eleven P M. And then one of them had to do with either allowing no amplified music on the patio or doing some mitigation things. He was going to try to have an answer for me by the time of the meeting as to which of those two options they wanted to take. And do you have an answer for me, Mr. Landman?
Yeah.
Tell me, what'd you decide?
So on the sound mitigation, if, if it comes down to it, we'd rather not build the eight foot fence. We're happy to do the vertical green wall option with a dense, with a dense planter next to the stage. But we'd rather not add the eight foot fence to the project as part of that. So if amplified sound is an issue without the eight foot fence, then we could do away with the amplified sound.
Well, we can talk about that with the commissioners. That my, my proposal was, the staff report suggested, and the T E suggests that they do away with either outdoor live music or with amplified music on the patio. They had proposed that rather than do away with the amplified music, they might do some mitigation. One of the things they suggested was a wooden fence or some kind of, of actual sound barrier fencing along the east property line. I had, and, and also some, either a green wall or something of that around the stage itself to do some sound absorption. I, I'm perfectly okay with the idea of amplified music within the time limits that they have set for themselves, with the exception of Tuesday night. And we're moving that to eleven P M instead of midnight. But I, if, if the commission wants to discuss that issue, I'm certainly open to doing it. There, there is some, there's one piece of property directly to the east. It's actually owned, as I understand, by Brahms. I'm not sure it's, it's currently occupied, but it is zoned R one. There may be still at least one R one property across Fiftieth Street to the south. The, the real concern I have in terms of, that's actually occupied residentially, that the real concern that I have just in terms of noise has to do with those properties that front onto Forty-Ninth Street west of Military. And there's not really any other residential nearby that I think would be affected. But I, I do have some concern about that. And it seemed to me that, that a fair trade-off would be, you know, these sound absorption or limiting features. The patio is, is fairly open. The roof is not attached to the patio walls, so it's open. And the, the walls of the patio itself are permeable and decorative, you know, brickwork that is open. So I, I will certainly take some guidance from the other commissioners. I myself would be inclined to require one or the other, either no amplified music as the first T E suggests or some mitigation of that sound through. And my, my suggestion had been, you know, just dense shrubbery in the south and east planters that border the patio itself. And then some kind of wall or fence along the eastern property line, so.
Commissioners thoughts on Ms. Powers' comments, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Chairman, let me just say this from the experiences that we had in Ward seven dealing with a concert venue has given me extreme pause now when we're dealing with live music. So I'm, I'm inclined to say that we need to require all of the above. The hours, no implication, and the, the physical mitigation with the fencing. Because, yeah, neighbors are not complaining now because it's no music being played and they're not paying attention to their mail. But know that we're going to have these complaints, I, I have no doubt from the people who are living, who are living, as you said, fronting on forty-nine. And so that's, to me, is a very serious issue that we should go ahead and resolve right, right now. Like, and do all of the above, because otherwise we're going to hear these complaints.
I, I, I agree with you, Commissioner Pennington. And, and Mr. Landman, just so you understand, I am more concerned about a successor user to your property who would share your ability under the zoning to have amplified music than I am that you are going to be a good neighbor currently, as you have been. And that's to Commissioner Pennington's point, a lot of times neighbors don't complain. One of the things that I asked staff was, did the three hundred foot notice requirement reach Forty-Ninth Street? I just wanted to confirm that some of those neighbors who were the closest affected would have been notified by this. Staff confirmed that the north side of that street would have been notified. And Commissioner Powers confirmed she reached out to the neighborhood as well. So we know the neighborhood's been informed, but I agree with you. I think we should be very sensitive about that. This is a small patio area, not even sure amplification is really necessary. I think requiring the mitigation measures, limiting the amplification and the hours are all reasonable measures to address the compatibility issue, to allow the club to continue to grow and succeed and have the outdoor area, which of course is now more valuable than ever. But also be respectful of the fact that at some point down the road, Mr. Landman, forgive me again, it may not be the High Low Club, maybe something else. And as a result of that, they'd have the same ability to have amplified music. And so it just seems to me we should get out in front of this thing, and that's what I'd be in support of.
I have a question, how big is the area and how big is the stage that people would be performing from? What's the capacity of the crowd that could be in the, in the patio to offer?
It's, it's eighteen hundred square feet, Commissioner Hinkle, on the, for, for the purposes of what this application actually includes. Mr. Landman, do you know what the capacity of that finished area could be?
It's under fifty.
Under fifty, okay.
And just to be clear, to avoid the fence or additional mitigation on the sound issue, we're willing to completely give up the amplified sound in this application and just keep the hours set as I spoke to with, with Commissioner Powers, which would be Tuesdays cutting off at eleven and the other days would remain the same. It's what they are in the application. Happy to get rid of amplified sound altogether.
Understood. Do other commissioners have comments or feedback they want to provide on this issue?
As an acoustic deal, I don't see any cause for concern on this.
I agree with you on the acoustic side, I agree. I, I, look, I think the, I mean, at the end of the day, there is an R one next door. I, I, I don't, I don't know that that will be an R one, you know, long-term. So I, I am not as hung up on the fencing issue, but the amplification is certainly a deal breaker for me, at least just for me. So that I would, I would agree with you, Commissioner Hinkle, I think an acoustic is not, this is a non-issue in that regard. Anybody else have thoughts they want to share? Hearing none, Commissioner Powers, I'll turn it over to you, just to see if there's anything else you, you want to say before I turn it over to members of the public.
No, I think that was, that was kind of where we were always going, either the amplification with the mitigation as far as sound barriers, buffers and absorption, or no amplification. I, you know, I think the limitation of the hour on, the hours on Tuesday night is reasonable. And, and the other T E, the second T E limiting, you know, this variable language is, is, that's fine. This is really pretty straightforward application. As I said, at, at the beginning, I'm, you know, not at all opposed to the idea of them having music.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, well, with that, I'll ask if there are members of the public that want to be heard on this item. This is S P U D twelve fifty, it's item number thirteen on today's agenda. It's a star nine on your phone to raise your hand, alt Y to raise your hand on your computer. So star nine is for your phone. If you want to be heard on this, this is your opportunity, and I'll pause just a moment. Hearing nothing on it, Commissioner Powers, I'll turn it back over to you. If you'd like to craft a motion, I think we're ready for it.
I'd like to move approval of item number thirteen, S P U D twelve fifty, amending T E number one to read no amplified music on the patio and adding a T E number three, cutting off the hours of operation on Tuesday evenings at eleven P M. Oh, there was one other thing, I'm sorry, Mr. Landman. There was language in the M D S about, about signage. There is an existing sign. They want to slightly relocate it from one port of the building to another part of the building, but it's, it's a sign that's existed a long time. And we're going to limit the signage to that existing sign, albeit slightly relocated on the building. So I'll, I'll include a fourth T E for that.
To, to limit signage to the existing sign, that's your fourth?
Yes, yes.
I believe that's clear, clear enough for the other commissioners. Just get someone to make a second there, and then I'll repeat it.
I'll second it, Hinkle.
Commissioner Hinkle is second to the motion staff. So I have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the city council for S P U D twelve fifty, amending T E one to say no amplified music shall be permitted on the patio, including T E two as written, and adding T E three, which would prevent live music beyond eleven P M on Tuesdays, and including T E number four, which would allow the applicant only to reuse the existing signage. And, but it can, it can be relocated. Is that fair?
That's good, that's good.
Excellent. Please cast your votes. And Commissioner Powers?
Aye.
Commissioner Hinkle? All votes have been cast. And that application is approved unanimously. Mr. Landman, good luck with that. We certainly wish you well and eager for you to have live music and get some people outside so they can enjoy your play.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. That's the last item on today's agenda. The rest of the items have been continued. So with that, I'll go on to additional items, communications and reports. There are currently no planning commission committees that I'm aware of, so we'll skip that one. Planning commission members, Commissioner Claire, anything from you?
Nothing from me.
Commissioner Powers?
I would like for us to consider the possibility of making the issue of the hundred and fifty foot separation from residential areas for drive-through speakers, just a, a policy issue so that it's understood, it's expected. And if we're not going to do it, that's when we'll discuss it, discuss it. Otherwise, it's understood that that's just going to be a thing.
I agree with you, and I, I have seen, you know, that it's an easy concession to appease concerns of neighbors that are going to join a retail-based commercial development, that things like dumpsters, the things that create, that are noxious essentially about those uses are moved further away. It's a very reasonable request and can almost always be incorporated into site design. Not a huge fan of us making policies that are outside of the ordinance, but these are adjustments that are concessions that I think really help, you know, remedy the compatibility problem. And that's, that's how we got there, and it almost always comes up, which is why I jumped out ahead of it. So hope I didn't step on anybody's toes there, but I agree with you that I think it's a great policy for us to have.
I know you're not generally a policy supporter, and that's exactly why, since this is your idea, I want to jump on it. I want us to do it.
Hey, and I'm, I'm going to jump in on this too, and I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm, I'm still butthurt about anything, but I wish that this had come soon enough for the on cue item, which I believe we did approve, the drive-through right next to residential. So I, I think, I think this is a great, you know, this is, this is a great turn of events. I'm glad to hear we're doing this, for sure.
Right, and there's no gas station that I've used with a drive-through and a speaker. I mean, they're always person to person on gas stations.
Yeah, and, and as I recall on that one, I think we did eliminate the drive-through speaker on that application, the one on Thirteenth and Western?
It is, it's face to face.
Yeah, we, we, we did away with it. It's, it's only a drive-up window, you can't order from the speaker.
I thought, I thought in the end, what I remembered is we, we decided that they had the retaining wall that was right next to it, and we just, and, and the feeling was that the retaining wall was going to obstruct the sound.
I don't know.
But it's been a while, it's been a while for me too.
Whether it's that or it's the, you know, increasing the density in established neighborhoods, you, you've won me over on a variety of fronts. So, you know, we don't always get them right the first time, but I think it's good for us to be thoughtful about those decisions.
One, one other quick thing, while I'm, you know, picking on myself a little bit too. Today, whenever I had to get up to, to walk with my laptop, is that acceptable? To stay on video, to like walk around with my, with my laptop?
It's, it's just when you step away from the, from the video coverage where you're not being able to be seen and you signed up to be on by video conference.
Okay.
You've just got to be visible, so if, I guess if you want to ride a bike.
You guys are okay with that? Yeah, okay, all right, cool. Just make it.
That's a step too far, and Commissioner Privet, I'll be skipping you for, for Commissioner comments after that. So Commissioner Coffey, anything to share with us? Hopefully something else?
No, there isn't, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Privet?
I'm good.
Okay, Commissioner Hinkle?
Yes, I would like to congratulate you, Commissioner Cravens, on turning twenty-one. You can finally buy a beer, happy birthday today.
I appreciate that, I wish that were true. Commissioner Highsmith, anything else?
So it is your birthday though?
It is indeed.
All right, happy birthday, man.
Happy birthday.
Have one on me.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Pennington, anything?
Just quickly, first, happy birthday to the chairman, that's great. I look forward to celebrating it at some point when it's safe. My other quick comment is I apologize for missing the study session today that we had earlier. I'm sure a number of you were there, but I just want to make sure that I've said this on the record for clarification. The idea of us do adding school capacity to our considerations for the commission gives me great concern. I think the only way that we could even consider this as an option is if there is very, very clear, objective criteria and full-time dedication to that criteria that we're going to use to evaluate each and every case. Because this will be the thing that a limit, you may as well just shut down all development in every part of far northwest and far southeast, or excuse me, far southwest Oklahoma City. Because every single week, there will be family after family coming in and saying the schools are too crowded. So I, I don't even know that it's something that should even be a part of our mandate, and I, I'm very concerned about it.
Commissioner Bennington, I'll tell you what happened today, in, in what you're referring to is the study session, which was noticed and publicly held meeting that people could sign into just like this. There was a discussion about it. That specific issue was held out of the recommendation to set for hearing updates to the comprehensive plan, which were prevented by, presented by staff. And the, that item was suggested to have a separate study session where districts were invited to participate in that discussion. I think really with the primary idea of beginning a dialogue about the challenges that we as separate political subdivisions need to engage in to try to help that issue. But I think, I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think it was fairly universal that there was real consternation about including that language and as a part of our consideration going forward. So you're, I think your concern is shared by a lot of people, it's just by, by the other commissioners. I think it's a I think it's a matter of how can we assist the conversation, do our part to get that conversation going more productively, and I think that's where it left off, so.
I should have known you all had it covered, so I appreciate it.
Commissioner, Commissioner La Forge, anything?
No, thanks.
Okay, Planning Department, Mr. Butler?
I don't have anything new for you.
Okay, Development Services, JJ?
Nothing today.
Municipal Councilor's Office, Susan, I think you're with us, aren't you?
I am with you, and the only thing I was going to say was, I was going to tell Janice that I could help her do some of that research, because it looks like we, we tried to do some of that research on the odor issue and at the state level, and we were not able to find any kind of a rule that specifically covered that. I mean, I know they have to have ventilation systems, but it wasn't specifically related to odor. So I know in our proposed ordinance that we are going to bring forward, we have addressed that issue. But, so if there's something you want me to help, we'll look again and contact the state on that, just to be sure. But we were unable to find a specific rule on that.
Thanks, I will give you a call. We can talk about this a little bit further. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, this is Jeff. Did you want to talk about, I know we mentioned in the pre-meeting, the the, the continuances and the, the new system and?
Yeah, that's, that's a really good point. Let me just summarize it quickly for everybody's benefit. And JJ, if I say something wrong, if you and Jeff want to jump in on it, essentially there are some changes to the way that alterations to applications and things are, are going to have to be made. And I didn't fully grasp what that is, so JJ can, can enlighten me. But the gist of it is this, it would force people to essentially really take continuances for a month instead of two weeks. And I think that, for me, reinvigorated the discussion we had last time about if there are going to be items that you're participating in that are discussions, that are, that are disputed cases, that are being continued, that before that item is continued, because it would continue it for a month instead of two weeks, it becomes particularly sensitive, at least in my opinion, for applicants, that if there's any other feedback that they would need from commissioners, we do that before we push that item out. Because I think it would be a really bad outcome to force people to take a month-long continuance, come back, and then have an issue that we didn't tell them about beforehand, that forced them to take a continuance again for the two. So now we've delayed an application a minimum of six weeks. You know, the process by and large takes an average of hundred, 100 days, as I recall, from our great staff training we have once a year. I learned that there. And so I don't want to lengthen that process unless it's absolutely necessary. So I just think we, you know, we talked about it a little bit last time, and I, and I think as a result of these changes, we should probably think more seriously about that, about making sure we're doing that as a group, so. And, and again, I know, you know, Commissioner La Forge shared some concern about that, which I think was really, you know, well said and pointed and appropriate. I would just say, like, if I were engaged in a conversation with neighbors and, and felt like the item needed to be continued so they could continue to sort it out, if it were printed in the packet and prepped to be heard before we continued it at that continuance request, I would just say, you know, are there any other comments from commissioners on this item they'd like to share with the applicant prior to the continuance? And then if you had something that you really felt strongly you needed to share, you could do that there, and then we can continue it. So that would just be my comments on it. JJ, what, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I think that's fine. I just, the, the new system should be fairly seamless for the commissioners. It's just that this, this extra step of legal review kind of backs us up a little bit. And it may result in some longer continuances for applicants.
Um, I, I, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like to hear a little bit more about this, and I would like for us to discuss it a little bit more. I, too, have been thinking about this quite a bit since we last discussed it. You know, I, I have some questions, some of which are legal or quasi-legal, about, you know, the there's an item, it's controversial, there's negotiation going on, there's back and forth, it's pretty clear it needs to be continued. You always, as it says on, on the agenda itself, you know, no case is continued until it's really continued. But you've got, you know, 25 or, you know, only five or however many neighbors you've got who are having to take off work, or having to arrange to, once upon a time anyway, drive downtown and find parking places and, you know, be there and do this. And, you know, you want to be able to give them some assurance that, no, they don't have to do all of that, just so that it, they can hear, yes, it is continued. But on the other hand, I don't know how we can say, okay, we're going to kind of talk about this in the sense that we're going to give you some input, but we're not really going to talk about this, and it's not really being heard. And so, members of the public, you're not allowed to speak. And I, I just think it's very problematic. We're going to have to kind of sort our way through this, I think.
Yeah, Susan, do you have comments on that, or do you want to withhold comments for now and circle back? I want to put you on the spot on this, but.
Um, yeah, I think I probably want to circle back around just to see exactly what you're talking about on, on the continuances.
Well, look, I think, you know, at least we can agree on this. I think we're trying as a commission to select between the lesser of two evils. This is like backing on a 36 or having a second drive. I don't, I don't know whether it's worse that we don't give applicants feedback, and so they don't know what to talk about with the neighbors. I, in my mind, and it may just, this may be an idealistic view, but at least if, if, you know, I had something and I'd been involved, but, but Janice, you said, you know, I just want the applicant to be aware, as they discuss this with neighbors, that for me, the signage is a real challenge, and that's something that they need to, you know, visit about with the neighbors before they come back to be heard on October 8th. Right? At least then they know what they need to be looking at in their application, and you're really telling the neighbors that that's a concern for you. And so it's kind of creates a, a point for them to visit about. I, I just, there's got to be a way we can do it. Like I said, it's, it's a lesser of two evils thing, and Susan, I'd really appreciate if you could kind of get back to us with some guidance, maybe, at our next meeting on, on this, just so we know what to do, because I think it would really help us. I think it would streamline meetings. I think it would prevent continuances, so we don't end up with super agendas like we had two meetings ago. And I think it would, I think it would help us give applicants and protesters information about where an application stands if it's moving through the process and being discussed. And I also think, too, Commissioner Powers, it prevents a commissioner from sort of being isolated in those discussions on, you know, with neighbors, to be able to say, look, you heard what Commissioner Cravens said, it's concern on the signage, so I, you know, you, you at least know where two people stand, right?
You know, I, I understand that point, and of course, I guess I, I'm having to get over the fact that, you know, I, 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 for the, for the longest time, I could have gone around the horseshoe and, and said exactly what each commissioner's concerns would be. That's not quite the same, and, and now longer the case. We all know about ASIN is driveways, but there are other issues that are, that are not quite so easily identifiable. And I tell you, I, one of the things that I always am very clear with neighbors about when I'm talking to them is, you know, they're not the ones who are actually, you know, deciding what is going to be approved. You know, they're there to decide what they can live with and maybe to get the developer to negotiate and agree. But even if they all agree, that doesn't mean that the commission's not going to have their own ideas about things. And yes, it would be very helpful if there were a mechanism by which we could sort of inject a little bit of that into the eh, eh, into the process at an earlier stage than actually at the meeting. That's less of a thing with people that we see all the time than it is with the one-off applications. But, um, yeah, that would be really helpful, but, but it is tricky. You know, I think, I think that there is already this kind of perception, I don't know how many other commissioners have these kind of meetings and, and, you know, get to encounter this, but, you know, that, that the applicants and the commission are on one side, and the neighbors are on the other. So if the applicant comes and they, they say, we're going to continue it, but here's what we think, and here's what you need to do, then the neighbors who may have been told, you don't really need to speak because we're not really hearing this, suddenly what they hear is, well, they've already fixed up a deal, and you know, we're, we're not even, you know, up at bat yet. So it's hard, it's hard. It's hard to negotiate these things. It really is. I mean, to find the right way through it.
Yeah, I agree. Well, Susan, if you, if you could help advance our discussion here, I think having you tell us what our options really would be, I think would help commissioners come, come down on where, how they view it. We'll just see how we feel as a group, and that's, that's what we'll do, so. I think it's a good way for us to, to move forward and try to get the issue to a resolution, so. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. I don't know if we have anybody with us, but I'll pause just a moment and find out. Just as a reminder, it looks like we do have someone who's raised their hand, staff, Leslie Ray Sears.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
I'm sorry I joined late. I just wondered what happened with items 16 and 17.
Item 16 and 17 were continued. Correct me if I'm wrong, somebody, I believe they were continued to October the 8th.
No, I thought they went later. I think those were continued to the 22nd, right?
22nd.
22nd, okay, I apologize. Mr. Sears, tho, those two items were continued until October 22nd,
Okay.
which is not our next meeting, but the following meeting.
Thank you.
And I am so sorry you had to sit there and listen to our fodder about things before we could.
Just learning how this works since I live next door to item 16 and 17, so.
Understood. We were important to hearing your comments on the 22nd.
But can I, can I interject? Can I get his name and number? I wasn't aware there's any concern.
Well, Mr. S- Yeah, Leslie Sears, 487-0854.
487-0854?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sears. Anything else? Okay, have a wonderful day. Anybody else want to be heard? I don't see anybody raising their hand, but I'll pause just a moment. Star nine or alt Y on your computer, star nine on your phone. Okay, hearing nobody, that's it. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Claire. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a great Friday weekend.
See you.
Thank you.
Yeah, happy birthday.
Thanks, guys.
Happy birthday.